All right, let's go on. Are there any agenda revisions? Or, okay, Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. To my colleagues, when you came in this evening, you had two documents in front of you. They are two proposed draft resolutions on which I've been spending some time. I have, I had wanted to wait until we got land code issues and all the associated decisions, Wildlife Management, SES. I would hope to have had all that behind us before I brought this to the council. But August 1st came and went. We don't have that stuff on tonight's agenda. So that's dragging out, for reasons we understand, longer than we had intended. And it just seems to me that, for me personally, waiting on these two issues, especially the second I'm going to mention, is, it's more timely, the issue, and my concern is more timely than, than it might, where the agenda might allow us to get to this in a month or two or whenever. So, the two resolutions in front of you, one has to do with healthcare. The green document, it's, as you read through this, it is not advancing a solution to our challenge of inaccessible, unaffordable, low-quality healthcare. But it is a resolution that if the council were to adopt it, would encourage our state and congressional representatives to step up to this challenge and give us financial models to evaluate what we currently have as a model, or options, and alternatives. That's a big step towards more access for more people with higher quality at less cost. So, I'm going to make two motions in a moment. One of them is going to be relative to this particular resolution, and the motion, when I make it, will be to put it on a future agenda. The second resolution, the lavender, is on gun safety. I have, my preference on whether it's healthcare or on this issue, from the time I came on this council, was to take an approach to issues like this where I felt like I could make a difference and not just make a statement. But I don't know how to, I can't, personally, I cannot, in light of what's happened in the last three or four weeks, I cannot, I cannot make a statement at this point in time, no matter how much of a difference I can or cannot make with the resolution. My hope is that if every municipality in the country, every school board, every county, board of county commissioners, were to stand up on this issue and communicate with Congress, we might all not just be making statements, but be making a difference. So that's the hope. So, here are the motions. The first is, I move that we direct staff to put the gun safety resolution on the September 10th regular agenda for council consideration.
It's been moved and seconded, so that's the, that's the one we're gonna, that's what we're gonna talk about now, and then we'll, I assume you're gonna move later for the healthcare resolution. Just out of curiosity, what date would that be?
September 10th is our first regular meeting in September.
Both on September 10th?
No, no. The motion is that, I'm gonna move in a moment that the healthcare resolution go on the September 24th agenda.
All right. All right, we have a motion on the table, and that is that the, why don't we take a moment, if you don't mind, if we could take a moment and read through before we vote? If everyone wants to take a few minutes and read? All right, I'm seeing that people are, actually, sorry. All right, anybody still reading? Need more time? Okay. All right, Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First of all, I would encourage Councilmember Waters to, in the future, send these to us before the meeting so we don't have reading time at council meetings. The second question I have is, exactly what is the goal of this proclamation? So many times we, our resolution, we pass resolutions that don't really do anything but make a political statement, and I'm just unclear what the goal is here.
Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. Councilmember Finley, as I tried to indicate earlier, I don't pretend that these are going to make a difference by us passing a resolution, not proclamations, but resolutions. But I feel like the residents of Ward 1 deserve to know where I stand on these two issues. And I think the residents of Longmont deserve to know where we stand as a council on these two issues. So if there's, if there's a short-term objective, it would be to, just to be clear, where are we, collectively at least, or if there's a majority that cares about this, or not? I mean, obviously, we could vote not to put this on, or vote not to approve a resolution or adopt a resolution. In terms of what I feel I owe this community, I've put these in front of the council. That's the objective, to be clear, at least where I stand and potentially where we stand. Longer term, if, if other city councils thought it worthy of their time and attention to consider, not these necessarily, but, but resolutions of their own, to communicate to policymakers at state and federal levels where they stand on these issues, maybe we play a leadership role in making that happen.
All right, Mayor Protam?
I would like to thank Councilman Waters for bringing these forth. I'm completely in support of this. I think we talk, and we talk, and we talk, and we have prayers and thoughts, but really, we need to actually do something. And I think this, even though this is just a proclamation, maybe, it is an opportunity for us to discuss these things. It's an opportunity for people to be educated, which is very helpful. I don't think most people still really understand that 80% of suicide, 80% of gun deaths are caused by suicide. And if it saves one life, I'm for it. There's also the fact that there are people, every time the people in the state level mention guns, or any, anything regarding guns, and vote on it, they are punished by the, by certain people by having a recall against them. And that has to stop. That undermines the democracy, the whole democratic method of, we already elected them, now because they voted with their conscience, you want to recall them. I am all for this. I think it would be a good opportunity to discuss this again, and I think this is a very measured and logical proposal, and I appreciate the references. I think that's very helpful. I do think you need to say, under bullet point five, define military-grade weapons, because that is often a criticism by gun rights people that, oh, you don't know what you're talking about, it's, you know, blah, blah, blah. So, and in some cases, that's true. Military-grade weapons need to be defined more closely. But I am all for this, and I thank you for bringing it forth.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. In conversations surrounding this topic, I've been fairly clear with folks that if this were, say, city policy, my vote would be very different than what it would be tonight. But I do think it's important to be transparent about my personal beliefs and stance on the issue, and as this is a resolution, I'm inclined to vote for it.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I do think that we've had two, two community conversations about this gun control issue, and I think that when we engage our community, that we need to act upon what it is they, they bring to the table, and not just let those conversations filter away and we do nothing about it. And many of the things I heard in those conversations are covered in this resolution. So I am in favor of it because it does make a statement about where we, where I personally want to go in our country as far as taking care of people and protecting them as much as we can. So I am for the resolution, and I'm glad that you brought it forward.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. I would just like to say that, in my opinion, the most powerful thing about this is the concept that we could be leading the charge for a series of municipalities to make similar resolutions and thereby force action at the state and federal level, not just in Colorado, but perhaps in other states as well. I just finished looking it up. There are 822 cities, councils, and jurisdictions worldwide that have declared a climate emergency so far. We are not one of them, but I believe that we are preparing one to consider. That kind of reaction is a voice that would be heard if it happened on these subjects, and so I'm going to vote for both of them.
All right, queue's empty, but I'm, I'm, my concern is just that what I would like to happen, in order for me to get behind it, it doesn't really matter, because it sounds like we've got the votes to pass, but my concern is that by passing this resolution, we're really asking for, I guess what I'm saying is, the data, the wherethes that talk about the data, and since you wrote it, I know the data's accurate. I noticed you even have notes and citations. Yes, it's well documented. So I'm all for citing data, but then where you lose me is on page three, where it says, "Therefore, be it resolved," and then it has a list of actions that we're encouraging the Colorado governor, the United States Congress, and the state legislature to take, that I would question whether or not these are effective measures to do what I think we all want, which is gun safety. So I would feel more comfortable, I mean, why doesn't anybody just do a research project to look at all the mass shootings and find out what they had in common and start attacking them? So I would feel comfortable with a resolution that said this, encouraging people to start looking at the problem, which I don't think they've done. But what we're asking, you're right, we needed, people should know where we stand, right? So, I mean, the bullet points here, required state-issued permits for gun ownership. I have no problem for a license, right? But for example, Boulder outlawed AR-15s. Nobody complied. So with a list, are the police going to go door-to-door and confiscate the weapons? The next bullet point, universal background checks on all sales, including private sale of firearms. We already do that as a state. Next, state-issued permits for concealed carry. I believe the county sheriff is appropriate. State-issued permits for concealed carry within a vehicle. There's currently a constitutional right to conceal carry in your home, in your car, and in your place of work, that I think that I wouldn't encourage people to infringe upon. Banning the personal sale or purchase of military-grade weapons by non-military personnel. You can pull up anything on YouTube, and you can see that by just one small, minor change, you have a semi-automatic rifle that either is or is not a pistol, or is or is not a military-grade weapon, just by the shape of the stock, by, so I would question our ability to do that. Next, limits on magazine capacity. Again, already limited. Required gun locks that enable only permitted gun owners to fire a weapon. Well, sometimes you don't want gun access restricted, and there's 300 million guns currently in the United States that don't have such a, such a lock. I mean, I mean, there's 300 million, you know? And then, red-flagging individuals who have given family members and/or law enforcement reasons for concern about their mental and emotional stability. While that sounds good, so, this is a part-time gig for me, right? And in my, my real job, I'm an attorney, and that is, you get those types of orders by doing what's called an ex parte communication with the judge. So if you want a restraining order, or in this case, you want a restraining order that will red-flag an individual, you just go into the court, say anything you want. The accused party isn't there. You can say anything you want, lie or otherwise. The judge, the standard is, if this is true, do I need to take action? And the judge then takes away that person's Second Amendment rights without that person being present. And so, I guess, so, again, and the question is, whether you agree or disagree with any of these things, the real question is, will doing those things make us more or less safe? And my question is, I don't know. I would be all for things that I know would make us safe, but are, but we're so busy, I think, passing, I mean, passing resolutions and making statements on this issue on both sides, without anybody just looking to see what actually do the, do the events have in common? And so I'm not going to vote for it, but I assume it's going to pass, and on September 10th, I will be making a motion that we actually change it from that bullet point, those bullet points, to actually encouraging people to collect the data, do the research, and come up with solutions that we could actually all get behind. Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. I'm not going to try to go tit-for-tat. I think I could, but I'm not, because I appreciate the perspective. And I will say this, on the question of research, I would, I would line up behind that initiative. Part of the problem is, the biggest reason we haven't seen the research on this topic that we would like to have seen is the same reason we've seen zero research on marijuana and its effects in this country, because the United States Congress has forbade that research for decades. We can't answer questions about marijuana use with much science, because our policymakers have kept us from doing the, our, the research, right, and answering questions from a scientific perspective. The same is true here. So in getting behind a research initiative, what I, what I hear would be my worst fear, because, you know, these, this issue brings forth all of our worst fears and best hopes, is that, that it becomes a research initiative, and we're going to wait a decade or two to take any actions. So what I have done, this is not proposed as a proclamation, it's proposed as a resolution. We heard a member of the public not too long ago comment on the fact that proclamations are not supposed to be controversial. This one may be. And I don't mean it as a proclamation, I mean it as a resolution, obviously. The, I guess I lost my, the last point I was going to make, got lost in the, in the fog. But we're not, we're not creating law, oh, but here's what is the point I was going to make, several of the, your references to what we don't call, I asterisk those things that are part of Colorado law now. My intent is not to communicate a message to the governor or state legislators that we, that we don't know what they've done. But people coming across the state line from somewhere else aren't subject to those laws, just like what happened in Texas and in Ohio. So I, so part of this message is what we need to do as a nation, in addition to what we've done as a state.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I think I've heard you ask this question before in this very context. Are we debating the resolution now, or are we just debating whether to put it on a subsequent agenda? I thought it was the form, it was the latter.
It is. We are only talking about putting it on a subsequent agenda.
Okay. Then I don't think we need to discuss the content of it that much. We've got a long night.
Thank you. Councilmember Finley?
Well, I, it used to be that city councils would not take up federal and state policy resolutions because they were federal and state policies. And I think it's fine to have a community conversation about these policies, but to take up council time when we'll be doing our budget especially, which is an actual function of the city, something we can do about, something about, to me is, is actually a waste of time, and it just seems like political pandering, so I will not be voting for this.
Mayor Protam?
I think it is, well, of course, we can't set federal and state policy, or even county policy, but we can be supportive of the people who do, who are regularly being attacked and cast out of public office by people who feel differently. Longmont has, like any other town, has problems with gun violence. I would say mostly suicide, rather than any of the other things. The issue of weapons and violence is not just a simple matter of mass shootings, which is a very small percentage of the gun violence, thankfully, but it is important. All of these things are important. It's a complex issue, and as Councilman Waters said, we are forbidden to actually even study these things. It's, you could say, well, if you look at the profile of mass shooters, they tend to be young, male, and white. That does not mean, though, that you can make that a profile of everyone who causes danger. Most gun owners are very responsible, they understand guns, and they are actually in favor of sensible gun regulations. They understand how to take care of their weapons, and they don't abuse them. The profile of a very small amount of people who cause a huge amount of violence and fear in this, in this country is not something you could apply to every person who commits an act of violence with a gun, including people who commit suicide by gun. So it isn't that simple, that we can just pawn it off on somebody else to do some research, do more research, and write another white paper, and do, you know, this is actually in support of county, and state, and federal people who are actually trying to do something. And I think it is high time that we took a stand on this issue.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, that passes five to two, with Councilmember Finley and myself against. Dr. Waters?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move we direct council, correct council, direct staff to place the resolution on affordable, high-quality healthcare for all Longmont residents on the September 24th agenda.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Why don't we go ahead and take a few moments just to read the resolution? And once you put down, if you're not touching the green paper, then I'm going to assume you've already read it. So put it down once you've read it. And, Dr. Waters, while they're reading, is there, is there, are these, have you given copies to staff or the press or anything like that?
One of the reasons I didn't send it out ahead of time, and probably should have, and that was good advice from Councilmember Finley, is that I didn't want a bunch of eyes on this before you had eyes on this. So Harold has a copy. I handed this to Michelle last week and said, would you please make copies? Make certain Harold has a copy, Eugene has a copy, and that there are copies prepared for council members.
Because I'm sure people will want a copy, that's why.
Well, I'm sure they will, too. I just, as I said, my concern, I didn't, once you start sending stuff on email, it goes around the world pretty quickly, and I would rather have had this group not have comment or pressure or whatever from anybody outside this group.
Oh, we'll get it now.
Before tonight.
Okay. All right, I think everybody's done. Nobody's in the queue. Mayor Protam?
I would support this as well. I think it's a very important issue. Once again, I think this is an issue, resolutions have the potential to educate people, and the opportunity for the public to weigh in, and the opportunity for us to have a discussion. I think this is very important. Healthcare and medical bills are the leading cause of bankruptcy in the United States. They are also one of the leading causes of homelessness, and it's very sad that during the Depression Franklin Delano Roosevelt put forth what was supposed to be, you know, Social Security was supposed to give us security in our old age, and in our middle age, and in our youth. And it has been slowly whittled away to not function very well, but we need to honor that, because that's, you know, we have, we're 37th in the world in terms of how our health care system actually functions, and yet we're number one in how much we spend on it. So we do need to talk about it, and we do need to have an understanding of what kind of resources there are for people who are in need of it, and help people understand that. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Once again, healthcare is not a municipal issue. It's not one of our core functions. I think that perhaps you should all run for Congress where you can really make a difference.
Dr. Waters?
Well, I am gonna, with respect to Councilmember Finley, I am gonna challenge the statement. I probably weakly tried to suggest in the first part of this resolution that while Congress, members of Congress dither, and the White House diders, the pain and suffering that is experienced is in this town. And there's a huge consequence for this city in terms of what we pay for healthcare and what we pay for those who don't have access to healthcare. So one of our homeless residents, or someone who just simply can't afford healthcare, has a medical emergency. Our taxpayers are subsidizing that cost. Our taxpayers are subsidizing the cost for, for people who are gainfully employed with insufficient healthcare plans. So it suggests that it's not a municipal issue. We can't solve it here, we just suffer from it here. And it's time that somebody with the, with the authority and the, and the courage to solve this problem, or to introduce solutions that we keep trying to piece together solutions for here at local taxpayer expense. In my, in my view, it is time to call on them to do their job, because we've been doing our job here.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to challenge that as well. I know that the state makes laws that the city is not supposed to be involved in, but the state is made up of cities. We send our legislators, our senators, and our congressmen there to represent us. If we don't make statements as a collective elected body to to tell them how we want to be represented, then we won't move the dime or the needle on anything, because they're constantly wanting to know, or maybe they don't wanna know. But if you make a statement, a resolution, and the other cities see what you're doing, then that can empower people to send the message to Congress. We want you to act upon this. So I will support this resolution.
Councilmember Martin?
I have to agree with that. We pay for membership in the Colorado Municipal League and other organizations that lobby at the state and federal level on our behalf. Last legislative session, we passed a number of resolutions backing or opposing certain bills that were under consideration by the legislature. And I know that our representatives believe that those resolutions have a very strong effect, at least in the state legislature. So I think this is something that we should do. I was participating in an outside brainstorming session, essentially, about the costs of the lack of healthcare to people. If a homeless person has a life-threatening event, whether it's a heart attack or a gunshot, that homeless person goes from costing the city $40,000 a year to keep him alive as a healthy homeless person on the street, to about $100,000 to keep that same person alive. So I think that these resolutions are not only both important, but they're tied together. And I think we should definitely send this message to our representatives at every level.
All right, nobody's left in the queue. I'm gonna actually vote for this one, because first of all, there's a lot of wherethes that I kind of and kind of not agree with. But I'm just looking again at what we're asking, you know, are we making a difference? And I would argue here that we are, because we're actually asking our state and executive leader here in the United, or in the state of Colorado to actively support the creation of an independently-generated model or models for funding affordable, high-quality healthcare such that the public may compare it to the current mix of healthcare financing programs. We're saying we want some options, and to fix it. Okay, I think that's great. So let's go ahead and vote. All right, that passes six to one, with the illustrious and beautiful Councilman Bonnie Finley against. All right, let's go ahead and continue with tonight's festivities.